I'd like to call this meeting of the Town of Pinetop Lakeside Council to order. I'd ask you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation.
(Inaudible)
Tony.
Good evening. Would you all please bow your heads? Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together this evening as we gather to consider matters of significance to those of us who are so blessed to live in such a beautiful and caring community. We ask you to bless the members of our town council and grant them the wisdom to make thoughtful decisions on the business before them tonight. We also ask you to bless the individuals appearing before us tonight who are willing to serve the community by filling a town council vacancy. We pray for our nation's service members, veterans, law enforcement personnel, firefighters, and first responders who risk their lives every day to keep our citizens safe and secure, and we ask you to bless them tonight and always. We thank you for the moisture you've given us, and we humbly ask you to continue to provide us with snow or rain as we prepare to enter another fire season. Finally, we ask your special blessing for those in our community who are suffering or facing difficult times, and we pray that you might grant them peace. We ask these things in the name of Christ Jesus. Amen.
Thank you very much, Tony. And again, I would like to say welcome to everybody. I kind of wish our council chambers were this full on a weekly basis or bi-weekly basis. It's nice to see you all here. Item B is Call to the Public. This is a business meeting of the town council. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Items on the agenda are not brought up in Call to the Public. The council, however, may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration at a later date. Items on the agenda will not be heard, as I said, or discussed due to the open meeting law, and individuals are limited to three minutes. Mr. James Rimhall would like to address us tonight.
Good evening, everybody. Vice Mayor. To start off, thank you all for the time and effort you spend serving our community. We know much of your time and effort is not visible to the public, and you do great work that goes unnoticed. I have much respect for the town employees and those that volunteer to support our town and its citizens. Over the past year, about five town council meetings have been canceled and handfuls of meetings were short in duration. As a citizen, I ask, why aren't these meetings being canceled or only have a short agenda? It is frustrating when meetings are canceled or adjourned early when there are so many things that need to be discussed regarding major issues and opportunities our region faces. I ask the council to have a list of items they, town, find to be important that can be added as possible agenda topics. Some conversations will be hard, different opinions will be shown, but there are so many topics that need to be discussed and addressed. I would love to hear the council discuss the economic development plan, how is the town preparing and reacting to climate change, plans for fire protection within our town limits, ideas to invite families to live in our town and not just cater to the tourists, reduction of workers in the workforce, reducing the brain drain on our most talented youth, lessons learned from the council RV park, lessons learned from the Paradise and Camp Fires in California. We can even look at our general plan. How are we meeting these goals? What conversations need to occur? I understand there are committees and assignments. I understand you have retreats. I understand some of these questions are large and evolve. If the town has had these or any other type of discussions, where are the notes? Where can the citizens find these conversations? All I can easily find are documents from 2015. I know more citizens and businesses want to be more engaged, but the topic that impacts them have yet been put on the agenda. Where can they openly provide their opinion? Please rethink before counseling or adjourned early when so much needs to be discussed. I ask not to take offense, but I love this area and want the best for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, James. We appreciate your comments. Anybody else wish to address on a non-agenda item? Okay, thank you. We are going to move on then to item C, which is the Consent Agenda. All items listed are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion of the council. There'll be no separate discussion unless a member of the council requests that an item or item be removed. Council members may ask questions without removal of the item from the consent agenda, and items removed are considered in their normal sequence. As you can see, we have two items in our consent agenda tonight. Vice Mayor?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Item D is Business Before the Council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item before or after a council discussion. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or a member of the public through the mayor at any time. Item D1, which is probably why a lot of you are here tonight, one of our favorite evenings, is the recognition of Public Servant Awards for Law Enforcement, Firefighter, and Emergency Medical Technician of the Year. Mr. John Beeler.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're going to do tonight what we did the 30th of February. Our commander is going to announce them, and I'll get a chance to pass them out, the plaque. So, we've got George, and this is George Baum, our commander. Al Jones is a past commander, and then we've got Dennis Hughes out there in the audience. He's a longtime member of our post, too, so I thought I'd thank Dennis. So, George?
I'm going to go off script a minute and just say to water over here in Pinetop Lakeside, because I live in Sholo. Must be something in it, because you all looked so much younger last week when I was here at our meeting, so I don't really know what happened here. A little bit of a joke there. I broke the ice. Like we said, these are the law enforcement, fire, EMT awards. They're not in any order, so nobody spurs or fur in a second. It's just a way to lay it out here on the table. I will explain a little bit is that the local agencies submitted names to us. They were judged and whatnot locally by us, and then we submit the same names to our district, and then district judges them, and they'll go to the state, and then state will judge them, and then they'll go off to national. So, I've read some of the bios that go along with these winners today, and if I was on those committees, they'd be in national right now, but who knows? But anyhow, we've got a lot of good people here. Let's start off with State Trooper Seth Stevens, Department of Public Safety. Pinetop Lakeside Police Department Officer Jonathan Crow. Navajo County Sheriff's Office Deputy Nathan, I'm going to, Oster Tag. My wife and I were both corrections officers down in Pima County for a long time, and the next one is Detention Deputy Natalie Johnson from the Navajo County Sheriff's Office. And last, but definitely not least, is Pinetop Fire Department firefighter Mario DePazo. Did I get that right?
I'd like to say something. These are our first responders, us and the veterans of foreign wars, our posts, are the ones that go overseas, and we do it overseas. These are the guys and the girls that...
John, can you get up to the mic, please?
It's been our community, and we're so proud to have them up here tonight and all representatives of the different agencies, and I thank you for your service to our state, our community, and our country. Thank you.
You know, while they're getting some pictures, I would like to invite any of their supervisors to come up. If you'd like to say anything about these fine individuals, you're very, very welcome to do so.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Both of the folks that are being presented their awards tonight are class act folks. You may notice that Mario looks a little different than Manny. However, Manny started just like Mario in our fuels crew from the Navette organization within our school system, got his training as a firefighter and EMT, started working in our fuels crew, and then that gave us the opportunity to figure out who he was, what his character was. I actually got to spend a little time on a wildland incident with Manny, took him on his first helicopter ride back into a fire in Prescott. So, I know his character, his work ethic. He's really a benefit to our community. And then Mario is part of this team that we've only had for five years here in the White Mountains, a fuels crew that's doing wildfire mitigation daily. And then during our wildland seasons, they're deployed all over the country to help other communities defend their properties and lives. So, two top quality people that are part of our organization, and I couldn't be more proud of their efforts and the awards that are presented. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. First, I want to thank the Pinetop Lakeside Council for doing this every year. I've been coming here for several years, once as supervisors nominating some of the deputies that I worked with, and then continuing as sheriff, and this is a great tradition, especially to the VFW for always continuing doing this. And secondly, thank the VFW for recognizing detention deputies now. We brought that in a couple of years ago. I kindly urged them, because in public safety, there's the backside that a lot of people don't see, and that's the detention side. When many of these officers do their investigations, they have to, there has to be a secure facility 24/7/365, just like our officers out on the street. But just a couple of quick notes about these two great deputies. Deputy Johnson's been with the sheriff's office for a couple of years. Prior to that, she was in ICS, which is a civilian position within the jail. She saw the uniform personnel she wanted to promote. She tested, she passed, and she was a phenomenal cadet and recruit, and we couldn't be more proud of her. She is also a member of our honor guard team and does, just represents the sheriff's office, and her little duty station, wherever she's asked to perform each day in her field, is always, it's always ran so well, and we just thank you, and you represented so well. So, thank you for everything you do. And then second, we have Deputy Oster Tag. He's been with us for two years, three years, I think. He just got a new little partner. I think he got scared on the road, so he has a new canine partner. No, he's a, he's a, he's a great deputy. He comes to us from California. The only downside about him, he sometimes, he lives close to the office, he wears an LA Dodgers cap into the building. But, but the work he does outside of that, it forgives that. But, he's just finished canine training. He's doing some interdiction work now in I-40 and assist patrol, and has a degree in criminal justice, went through, got his education, and is now out serving the public and is a hard-charging deputy, and he's, he is Johnny on the spot for us up there in Holbrook. So, we appreciate him and appreciate you guys recognizing them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Come on up, Brian.
So, I'm not here to talk about, about the deputies. The sheriff, the sheriff already covered that, but Seth Stevens' captain is not here. He's on his way. They had an incident up, up North County a little while ago, but he's on his way. I didn't want him to feel left out. I had the, I had the pleasure, before I came to work at the sheriff's office, to supervise Seth. I don't know why he got rolled up this, this go-around. I don't know the numbers or anything like that, but I can just tell you a little bit about Seth. One heck of a state trooper, and he's committed to this community. He was, he was raised right here in this community. In fact, he went to school in Sibiqui. Isn't that correct? And has lived here in the, in the Sholo area his whole, his whole life, and is raising his family here as well with his beautiful daughters here. Seth is a guy that, no matter what's going on, when he shows up on scene or shows up at the, at the office or whatever, he always brings a smile to everybody's face, always, with some dumb joke. So, don't follow him on Facebook, because he's got a lot of stupid jokes. But anyway, I just wanted to say something on behalf of Jeff for, for you, Seth, and I enjoyed working with you, and it's good seeing you, seeing around, plus we're neighbors as well. And then this young man right here, I don't know him, but I worked with his dad back when his dad was with the police department. So, congratulations, young man. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I want to thank Officer Jonathan Crow for all the hard work he does for our agency. He's stepped up in many ways to, from, from covering shifts to, you know, you name it. He's there, he's part of our, kind of doing our traffic enforcement stuff as well through the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, and I want to thank him for all his hard work and the hard work of everybody that's up here being recognized tonight. Without them in our community, we wouldn't have a safe community. So, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you all for coming. John, thank you, as always, for the work that you and all of you do. We appreciate that very much.
Thank you for letting us come here. We appreciate it, and appreciate all them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on then to item D2 on our agenda is the proclamation of February as Black History Month. Whereas Black History Month is an annual opportunity to recognize the central role of African-Americans in the history of our state and nation. I think I'll wait just a moment. Anyway, whereas Black History Month is an annual opportunity to recognize the central role of African-Americans in the history of our state and nation, and whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions of African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, social, and political development, and whereas the national commemoration of Black History in the United States dates back to 1926 and was initially observed the second week of February to coincide with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass, and whereas by the late 1960s, the week had involved into Black History Month, thanks in part to the civil rights movement and a growing awareness of the experience of African-Americans in our country, and whereas Dr. Martin Luther King, Jr., famously said, "I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will be judged by the color, not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character." And whereas Black History Month was officially established in 1976 by President Gerald R. Ford, who called on the public to seize the opportunity to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history, and has since been recognized by every United States president, and whereas the Town of Pinetop Lakeside honors the significant contributions and advances made by African-Americans in our state, across our nation, and throughout the world in such areas as education, medicine, art, culture, public service, economic development, political, and human rights, and whereas we see the greatness of America in those who have risen above injustice and enriched our society. Now, therefore, I, Stephanie Irwin, Mayor of the Town of Pinetop Lakeside, do hereby proclaim February 2022 as Black History Month in the Town of Pinetop Lakeside, and witness whereof I have herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the Town of Pinetop Lakeside, Arizona. Okay, our next agenda item is item D3. This is a public hearing and Consider Ordnance Number 22-445 and Resolution Number 22-1607 amending Town Code Title 5, Chapter 5.12, Special Events Permits. Jeremiah?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. This item for special event permits, special event permits currently how the Town Code reads, they're allowed, anybody can come and get a vet permit. It costs $100. The period, the length of the period is for 10 days, and they can do that up to four times in a year. There has been some instances where they have run their course, done their, run their four events, and then they'll have somebody else come in and sign up for the paperwork and do the same thing, basically. So, there is, they figured a way around this. Really, this isn't, this isn't addressing that. All this is doing is taking the timeframe and the cost and splitting that timeframe instead of consecutive days. It's non-consecutive days. So, someone could come and say, "I want to do an event on the weekend for five weekends," and it would cost the same amount as the current permit costs, $100. So, this doesn't change the fee schedule. Everything as far as the $10 per day is what it costs currently if you break down the 10 days that they're paying for $100 for. So, it doesn't change any of that. It just changes the consecutive to non-consecutive. Instead of getting four permits, they'd only have to get one permit, and they still have to get the vendor's license or the single vendor's use license, which verifies that they have a TPT license with the state Department of Revenue, or that they have an exemption. That's the only requirements, which are already required. So, is there any questions?
Council, any questions for Jeremiah? Counselor Snitzer?
Yeah, I've got a couple. Roughly, can you tell, I don't mean to surprise you, I should have asked you this ahead of time, but do you know how many permits a year we issue, special use permits?
I haven't seen any personally, but the ones that came in, came in, usually come in in the summertime. Since I got here in July, it was after I'd seen that. That's the bulk of them coming in the summertime.
Okay, but right now, you can't tell us how many?
There hasn't been any this year so far.
Okay, yeah. Any idea, I'm trying to come up with a measure of, of, you know, how big they are. Do you know how much sales tax we've seen from events?
I don't personally see that information. Kevin may be privy to that, but I don't know that, I don't have a hard number for the sales tax.
Okay, from special, special...
It is required to be collected as part of their TPT license that we require them to show proof of in order to get a single vendor's license. Now, it's different if it's a business owner who already has a business in town, they could also go and set up at the events, and they wouldn't be required to get a single vendor's license.
Wouldn't separately report, yeah.
Right.
Any other questions? Counselor Watson?
So, currently, they can get a 10-day permit for $100. Is that correct?
Right, and they can do that...
And they can do that four times.
Right.
So, if they come in on a one-time basis and request a 40-day permit, it's $400?
Right.
Is it, is it $400 no matter what they request, or is it, let's say they just request 10 days instead of 40?
Right, so if they requested 10 days instead of 40, they would only be charged $100.
Okay. So, the fee schedule as far as what the vendors will be paying is the same?
Basically.
This way or the...
As long as they're consecutive or non-consecutive. There is an instance where they may be paying a different price where, consider someone who does it on the weekend, they, and they would only do it on the weekend where they came in and got the permit on the weekend, or not on the weekend, but they got the permit for the weekend, for two weekends, say, and they're only using it on those two days. They still, so they're basically paying $100 for those two days, but it's through the length of that 10 days that they could actually use it. So, they have the legal right to do it for 10 days, but they may only be doing it for two days currently, which is one situation that I see.
Okay.
But on a day-per-day basis, it's the same cost.
Vice Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, we, we kind of went through some of this a few years back, and one of the considerations I hope you, you make is, is what our current business people think of something like this. I don't want to make it any easier for these kind of vendors to, to get their permits, because I think it hurts our, our businesses. They're, they're selling things without the overhead, and, and I'd like to see a little more input from our business community about something like this, rather than us making a decision, and then maybe hurting the, our businesses in the town.
I think that's, I think that's a valid perspective.
I think that's, I think that's a valid perspective, Vice Mayor. I'd also like to address maybe, maybe another side of that that maybe hasn't been considered. When people come to the community, they see all the different businesses, they see all the different, even if it's vendors or whatever, and they have a good time. They remember that experience. They come back. In the instance of like a farmer's market, if somebody comes to a farmer's market and buys a few items for their dinner table, more than likely not going to find everything they need there. They're still going to go Safeway and buy food. So, think about it as perspectives of a tourist or someone who brings dollars from outside of the community to inside the community. They're going to remember that experience they had. They're going to remember that there was shopping there and things to be done, and they're going to want to come back.
Okay. Counsel Buess?
Yeah. So, I'm torn on this issue, and I've spoken to staff about this and asked the questions about, do we know how much, how many taxes, dollars are coming in, that type of a thing. I've also talked to some of the small businesses, and they are concerned about it. So, you know, I mean, on the one side, I like to see capitalism, see people have the opportunity to do what they want to do with their businesses and that type of a thing. On the other side, as I drive down Main Street, White Mountain Boulevard, and I see all the empty buildings, commercial buildings that we have in the town, and I certainly don't want to chase out any ongoing businesses that we have now. So, I do think, I think some things have been brought up that'd be good. I mean, I think we need some input from, from the local businesses. Also, and I talked to Jeremiah about this, but, so there is one entity that comes in during the summer and just does Saturdays.
Right.
And so, under this new, if this were changed, they would pay $10 a day for, let's say, 15, and it's during the summertime, so let's say they would use 15 weeks of Saturdays. That's 15 days at $10 a day comes up to $150. If, if we use the current status, the way it is and the way they are doing, is they would have to go for 10 days at a time, whether they use those 10 days or not. So, they only get two Saturdays out of that, and they're paying $100 for each one of those. They can do that four times. Then someone else in the entity has to step up and get the thing because they can only do four. But the town is collecting $750 in that case.
Is that including the single vendor license or not?
No, that's, that's just on the, because they're paying $100 for 10 days.
Yeah, it's 400 max that they could do though. So, it would be 400, so the delta would really only be $250.
Okay, so it'd be $400, still significantly more than 150. Just as a side note, 30 years ago, my wife and I were involved in some craft fairs. At that time, we were paying $25 a day for a spot to do that type of a thing. And I wonder if maybe we should look at, $10 isn't very much money, $10 a day for that. And I, and I wonder if we ought to look at the, increasing the fees on that.
And I was thinking about that, Counsel Buess, after I left, and the way that this is worded, we'd actually have to go back and do another agenda item because it's in the fee schedule.
Okay.
If we were to change some of the fees.
Anyway, just, just some thoughts there and something to think about. I mean, I want to encourage businesses that we have to stay here and to grow. I also want to encourage new businesses to come in and, and even though they're just coming for the weekends and things like that, what I guess, I want to try not to push out one for the other if, and I don't know if we can do that or not, I don't know. That's, again, just some food for thought there.
Thank you. Counsel Snitzer?
Yeah, I just, before, I just wanted to ask the questions, but now I'll make some comments. First of all, without that information that I asked you for, I'm not prepared to vote to approve this. But I've had some other experiences, like you were saying, with businesses where they, and I'm concerned about the competition. This has come up before. The four, four times a year was the concept, but it was poorly implemented, and it doesn't work well. People can evade it. You have different, the, I believe there's a solution, but it's not an easy solution. The special events businesses, as it's run, they promote their business, not the town. And so, when I was thinking about this, I thought, and by the way, if you're a special event guy, you're really in the business in Pinetop Lakeside if you have special events in Pinetop Lakeside every week. Give me a break.
Which we see all summer long, even with the current code.
Yeah. There, there would be maybe a way around this if the town were to host four events a year, major events. That would promote the town and, and say, "If you've got an appetite for a special event, come and participate. We'd love to have you. Here's your four opportunities." And then they come, we have them, hopefully they bring, we could have two or three in the summer if we wanted, but it would be focused on that, you know, a big blowout weekend for the town that would drive business to the other merchants in town. It would be better for the people holding their special events. It's the, you know, what they call critical mass. If you get, you know, if you have little events scattered throughout the summer, you'll have little audiences at every event. But if you have one really blowout weekend, then you're going to have a chance for people to make some real money. So, I would like to see us, before we go about changing the laws, rethink what we're doing.
Thank you. Any other comments from the, Counsel Krigman?
I'm wondering, what do other towns do? I lived, when I was taking care of my mother in Naples, Florida, it was a big deal to have a street fair that had lots of crafts and things. So, I know that there is a process, and this has been happening here for a long time. But what about other, other tourist towns? What do they do?
I don't know if anybody has the answer.
Keith, you can address how Shallow handles this situation?
Thank you. From our discussions with, say, for example, Diane North, we have more requirements for them to get their permits, to check to make sure they're paying their TPT. They have a farmer's market every Saturday. It's only on Saturday, right downtown, supported by the Main Street Association. I don't know anymore about their process. I agree with Counsel Buess that raising the fee to $25 is, is a grand idea. I think it would work and would, and would help to bring in additional revenues. We do everything that we can to ensure that we get the information, that if we were able to ever go back and double-check on these to make sure they're paying, paying it, that we're making sure we're getting the TPT information. The other side that I would throw out is that, how many times do we see a vendor or a, you know, somebody's got a food trailer become a brick and mortar? So, they become successful, their, their brand is selling, and they open up a brick and mortar. I've seen it. I think Jeremiah has seen his own stepfather succeed in the same way, starting out as a tent vendor. I'm not sure how many other brick and mortar stores here in Pinetop Lakeside have gone through the same formula, but it helps them to get to that point. And so, I, you know, we're a tourism-based town. These special events, people come up here, they're looking for that. Sure, we could go to four times a year, but we're already doing events. So, we have the Run to the Pines, there's a artisan festival there, we have our balloon festival, there's vendors there for that, you know, so we have several that, that go on. And so, we are, to some degree, meeting that need. But I think that we're trying to make it a little bit easier. And the process is all we're looking at right now, so. Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Counsel Watson?
So, just, and I agree with everything that's been said. From an economic development standpoint, it's, the national average is that 90% of relocations start with a visit, whether it's they end up buying a second home, whether they expand or relocate their business. And so, tourism, and it's, it shouldn't be any surprise to anybody that tourism is a major part of our economy. Without it, we would be in dire straits. So, from, from an economic development standpoint, I don't want to do anything to discourage new visitors coming up to experience the mountain. Having said that, I do think there are some things we can look at, and I'm not sure what they are, I wish I, I wish I knew off the top of my head, but from what the discussion has taken place so far, I think there are some things we can look at to try and make it a little more of a level playing field, whatever the case may be. So, from a personal standpoint, I'm not ready to take any action on this tonight based on what I've heard, but I, I do think that we need to continue to encourage tourism as a major part of this economy and to support those things that help bring new visitors to the area.
Thank you. This conversation has been wonderful. I do agree with a lot of what everybody's said. However, we did have a vendor come to us with this, this concept, who holds the once-a-week. And I can see where maybe there are some little tweaks that we could make that would make it helpful to that particular entity for a once-a-week farmer's market-type event as opposed to these artisan craft shows that kind of have proliferated a little bit more. So, we do, this is a public hearing tonight. I do have three individuals that would like to address us on this one. So, first of all, Carla Bowen. Please make sure everybody uses the microphone well.
And nobody knows who I am, and I don't miss this at all. You know, I feel like this is Groundhog's Day because I've been dealing with this for 15 or 20 years, and it's the same, same old stuff, same old stuff. I don't think many of you have had businesses where you've had to lay awake at night and look at the ceiling and wonder where you're going to come up with $10,000 to pay your property tax, or where you're going to get the money to pay your employees. It has been rough this last two years, rough. Now, these small businesses are in a position where they can't even hire help. They can't get people to work. So, there's a few things I want to be sure that I cover here. So, I made some notes, and I know you guys are glad. Let me show you what 40 days a year looks like in the summer. There's July. And there's August. That's every single weekend, three-day weekend in the summer. So, your bricks and mortar businesses are paying sales tax. They're contributing to this community. The tent vendors come in, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeremiah, but the promoter comes in and gets one license, correct?
Currently, they have to get four.
No, I'm talking about a vendor comes in and gets one license.
They get a special use permit and each?
One license, and then they have 10 or 15 or 20 vendors underneath them?
They all have a single license.
Every single one of them?
Every single one of them, unless they're.
And so, you get, because according to the rules, it says that they have to turn in their insurance, their liability insurance.
That's combined by the, through one special.
That's not what, that's not what it says. It says every vendor has to supply insurance to the town. It's not happening. I go to work at my office on a weekend, and they're parked in my parking lot. I had, had a big duly truck with a 28-foot trailer parked in my parking lot so they could go to crafting. These are not farmer's markets. They're selling crafts. In many cases, they're selling the same thing that they sell at the Burley Bear, but they cut it 50% off because they have no overhead. Now, when Kent Brooksby was, had Kevin's job, I was able to get some figures, and those figures were, sales tax for tent vendors was $1,700, and for the bricks and mortar was 1.7 million. Now, if you go back and check now, I guarantee you, those figures have not changed that much, except the bricks and mortars are paying more. Everything is on the back of your small business owners, and you allow all of these people to come in 40 days out of the summer, and pretty soon, you will have more vacant buildings because these guys can't handle it. They can't handle it. Now, one more thing, well, maybe a couple more things. When I drive down Penrod to go to my house, and there's, there's an activity there, I can't get down Penrod to get to my house. I tried to get my golf cart down Spruce to come in through the back way to my office, and I could hardly even get my golf cart through there. Now, Chief Morgan, they've had some, some instances where, there was one time where they got it, and it was a false call, but they got a call from the crafting next door. They couldn't get in. It ended up being a false call. But the guys are walking around, they're wondering where to go. They could not get in for an emergency. Now, let me, let me tell you one more thing. You guys remember the Civicu Fire? Right, right, was it right before or right after the rodeo fire? The Civicu Fire burned nine square miles in three hours. Pinetop Lakeside covers six square miles. We anticipated that for us to evacuate on a busy weekend, it would take 17 hours to evacuate. This is a catastrophe. It's a safety issue, and it's a small business issue. I know.
Thank you, Carla.
I would just like to address the comment about the insurance. I see in the, this is in the, in the section identified for special events.
I have it right here.
Yeah, it's in, what is it? 51230B and 15. It says, "All special event applicants, event organizers will be required to provide a certificate of insurance." So, that's specifically stating the dates of the special event for commercial general liability in the town of Pinetop Lakeside. An additional insurance minimum limits are $1 million per occurrence and $2 million aggregate. So, that's the organizer.
No, it doesn't say that.
It says, "All special events organizers will be required to provide a certificate of insurance."
So, who's your organizer?
So, that's whoever puts the event together.
So, you have one promoter?
Right.
Who's the organizer?
Right.
And then your 20, 30, 40, 50 that come down here?
Right.
That have no obligation to the town, but the town has the liability. Because I guarantee you, that certificate does not cover all of those people underneath. I guarantee you.
Okay. I just started calling?
No, I understand, but it does not cover all those people. I guarantee you.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeremiah, for that information. Trent Penrod?
I've never spoken at any of these things because I don't ever want to get upset more than I have to. We just keep going rounds on this, though. I've been here 22 years now with my business and three years prior at a business similar, running it. So, I've been 25 years doing retail at a brick and mortar here on this mountain, cut and dry. Tent vendors come in, they steal money from the community, all the business owners. There's, there's no way around even to fathom that. You can say what you want, they're collecting their tax, they're reporting their tax, they're giving their, it's not happening. Maybe 50% of their sales, but if someone gives them a $100 bill, that's going right in their pocket. You guys aren't seeing the dime? Nobody's seen a dime of that, guaranteed. And $400, that's a joke. That's a joke. I can pay my employees that in, not even a whole day, actually, now because all the, you know, minimum wage go up. One day at my store with five employees is probably going to, and that's not even withholding the, I'm probably putting out 600, 700 bucks a day in the summer when I'm fully stacked. Right now, we're down to nothing. My wife and I are running it almost all the time, and we're closed two days a week, just like all the restaurants. The restaurants, they don't even have enough help to keep up. You guys talk about bringing people in? Guess what? The people are here. If you haven't seen the traffic, I don't think we need to bring them. They, they know they want to be here. This is a great place to be. They're going to come regardless. They're here for the beauty of the mountains, to get away from the. the, all that craziness and the heat. We really don't have to cater to them and snuff out all the small businesses, so that they can go walk through a, quote, "farmer's market", which sometimes, that's a joke, too. A farmer's market, to me, that means, hey, we got produce, we got some stuff from local farmers, fine. But even that is crossing the line a little bit with Eddie's Country Store and Safeway, which support us in the winter. Where are all the other vendors in the winter? Never here. You haven't pulled any permits. You're not going to pull any permits till May, probably, because nobody wants to be here till May. We're like dead in the water till mid-April, early May. It's a no-brainer. It's simple logic. If people come up here, which they're going to come, I don't know if you guys are blind, I've seen the traffic increase every year in the summers. You cannot take a left turn, period, after like May 15th through September, almost. Family comes up, they have a budget. Everybody has a budget, almost. I mean, there might be some exceptions. You come with $300 to spend, you go hit the craft fairs, guess what? Your kid might talk you into something, whatever. You might see something that's better priced than some of the vendors that are paying overhead, employees, taxes, all that. You might buy it. Guess what? You have $300 budget for your family, for extra spending money besides lodging, food, and everything. Now you've got $100 to distribute at the other places. It's cut and dry. That's just, it's facts. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Rob Hepner.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and staff. So I just wanted to give some input. When it comes to these small vendors, I've lived in seven different communities and been on six different chambers of commerce. And this is always the one that everybody gets up arms about, because it's like, well, it's unfair, and it's not, you know, so there's a balance that has to be done. One, if you look at small vendors, and you look at your charities in the area, and the events that they run, and typically, like the Chamber of Commerce would do, it's based upon these types of businesses. Your small little craft fairs and things like that, yeah, you have to have code enforcement on this. Probably the most aggressive I've ever seen was the city of Scottsdale. When it comes to an event there, they do Bike Week, they do tons of events. They're there, there's a code enforcement person, makes sure that they have their forms and everything. And he's correct, you know, you're always going to have people that are going to want to skirt it and not pay the fair share, and it's much harder for them to do than it is a brick and mortar. Yeah, brick and mortar has to pay the brick and mortar costs and things like that, but they don't get the advantage of being able to leave their stuff there all the time. They've got to pick up each weekend, rebuild each weekend. So look at that as a balance between the two things. And I can tell you, from what I do, a lot of businesses start in this realm. They start in the realm of putting up a tent, seeing if they can sell stuff, see if they can deal with people, see if they can deliver them products, and convert into a regular business. Is it a high percentage? No. But there's not a lot of high percentage of business starts in the first place, that get started and run. So it's something you want, and it's something, as a government, I would say, you know, yeah, you want to, you want to level the playing field, but it's not your responsibility to completely make things fair for competition. You know, you shouldn't make it so that somebody that does something on the street can't put somebody out of a business in a building, because they don't have a good business. If it's equal, then fine, but not otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to address this? Then I will declare the public hearing closed. Council members, any further discussion, comments? No action? Vice Mayor?
I would like to table this. I think we need a little more study on it. I think we need to know a little bit more about the economics, pro and con, and I think we need to know a little bit more about the impact on our businesses before we decide what to do on this. So I'd like to table this indefinitely until we can have some studies done and get a little more, maybe a lot more information on the topic.
Anybody else?
Yeah, in addition to more information, I would like to see more alternatives.
Okay. We need a motion? No, okay. All right.
Mayor?
Yes.
I wouldn't make a motion. If they make a motion, you have to set a date.
Set a date, exactly.
If you just do nothing?
Take no action?
Then it's, whenever it comes back.
I move that we table.
No, don't, no, no. Because we have to have a specific date if you...
A specific date.
To bring it back. If that's what you want, that's fine. Or just, we just will die for lack of a motion.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's always an interesting topic. Item D4 is also a public hearing, and consider ordinance number 22-446 and resolution number 22-1608, remanding Title 10, vehicle and traffic by adding Chapter 10.02, general parking regulations. Jeremiah?
Okay, so this is Mayor and Council. This item is in regards to public parking. I was approached by my code enforcement officer, Chelsea Haas, and she was telling me about her frustrations about how she's not able, she doesn't have the teeth, really, to be able to do what she needs to do to make our community safer and more traversable. And there was one incident in particular, I put it in my monthly report. So you guys, I hope you saw that, the RV that was parked at the gas station. There was nothing that we could do in that incident, because it was parked on private property. So this gives us a little more scope and authority. In that instance, we would be able to contact the property owner, and if they filed a complaint, then we would be able to remove that, the vehicle, within 72 hours. And the cost of towing would be charged to the owner of the vehicle, and the fee is $60. So I think that's currently what it is already. We didn't change any of that. We just added the ability to have them towed. And that was, everything else that's in there is very similar to what the city of Sholo's doing. Everything else was taken from their code, as far as blocking. That one is, if you park across 20 feet, basically a lane is 12 feet, so that's over a lane and a half, you'd have to be blocking that much to be considered blocking. Traffic, if you park on a sidewalk, that's a no-no. And the continuous parking, if you have a vehicle parked in the public right-of-way for over 48 hours, that vehicle could be also towed. So is there any questions on the proposed parking regulations to adding Title 10, adding to Title 10, Chapter 10.02?
I have a couple of questions. So this helps with the incident of the motorhome on private property. But what about somebody who parks on a public street and leaves their vehicle there? That would also...
Right, so that would be...
The 48 hours?
Continuous parking.
Uh-huh.
10.030, no person shall park a vehicle in the same place in a public roadway in excess of 48 consecutive hours after placement on the vehicle, a written notification of the prohibition of this ordinance.
So in essence, we're going to be banning on-street parking, long-term?
You can't park for two days, yeah.
Yeah.
You could park, but not for two days.
Or weeks on end?
Right, or indefinitely, right.
Okay. And that's town-wide? And enforcement of that, is that going to be kind of complaint-based? Or are you going to see it, and maybe put a sticker on their window? Or do you have a thought on that, Chelsea?
Yes, ma'am. I plan to do kind of a sticker-based system, so that way, first kind of warn, you know, things like that. But as you know as well as I do, when I drive around, a lot of times, or my fellow officers, they get complaints from citizens that somebody slid off the road during the last snowstorm, or whatever the case may be. And we kind of just have to say, "I'm sorry." Like, there's really not much more we can do for that. So my hope is, I'll be able to patrol a little more heavily, and then we have these things like the grand estate sales and things like that, where I've gone out to Woodland Hills, and streets upon streets are just plugged up. And that concerns me, because what if I need to get a fire truck or an ambulance down there and get a citizen out safely? I can't, because we just don't really have anything that regulates that. So my hopes is, this would kind of put a kibosh on all of that.
Okay. Thank you for bringing this to us, too. Vice Mayor, you had a question?
Yeah. First of all, thank you for doing this, because we've needed this for a long time. I can tell you, in our subdivision, Woodland Hills, we've tried to enforce some parking, but it's hard without something to back you up, like a town ordinance. So in that regard, I have a, I had one technical question, is where is the roadway width, the 20 feet? Where is that measured? In our subdivision, is it pavement, the edge of the pavement, or the edge of the curb, the concrete curbing?
Right. I would consider it, a lane width is 12 feet, right? So basically, you're over, blocking over a lane and a half for blocking traffic for that section specifically in 10.0210. And that one, I don't think we need any notice or anything. Whereas in parking vehicles, you could cite, basically, if that was occurring right at the time.
Correct.
The other ones, where it's continuous parking in the right-of-way, that one requires notice in 48 hours. So...
Well, we also have a prohibition at night during storms.
Right. That's for public works and for plowing.
Yeah, for plowing.
And actually, that is not just during storms, that's specific dates. It's November 1st to April 1st, I believe?
Yeah, I think it's the winter months.
It's, so it doesn't have any, it can be perfectly clear, and you're still not supposed to park on the street during those times, if my understanding is correct.
So should that be part of this?
No.
Oh, that already is.
Okay. So to answer my question, is the 20 feet just the pavement?
So the way that, the way that they had it written in Sholo was, "It is unlawful for any person to stop, stand, or park any motor vehicle or any other vehicle upon a street in such matters to leave available less than 20 feet of the width of the roadway for the free movement of vehicle or traffic." So I guess I misspoke when I said it's 20 feet. If you leave less than 20 feet, then it's considered blocking.
And my question still is, what's the roadway?
Right. I would say it's the width of the paved asphalt. So basically, you have 24 feet on most roads.
Thank you.
Council views?
Just for clarification, my understanding is, if a vehicle is leaving less than 20 feet, I mean, you can tow that vehicle immediately, right, upon a complaint, or you don't have to wait any time for that. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Or if you observe it when you're out. And just for clarification, the 48 consecutive hours, so someone who parks in front of their house and leaves every day to go to work, and then they come back and park, you're talking about a vehicle that is stationary on the road for 48 consecutive, more than 48 consecutive hours, is the way I read this. Is that right?
Yeah. If it wasn't being moved, then it's over there for 48 hours, and there's a, you can then place a notice on that, you know, the prohibition order.
Okay. Thank you.
So if it's just somebody that leaves every day, then that one's to account.
Okay. Chief?
Just a quick clarification. If there's, I think Vice Mayor was talking about the concrete revenaging along, I think somebody else in Woodland Hills during, during, sort of, that would be considered a part of the roadway. So revenaging plus the asphalt is the full width of the roadway. Now, if it was, if it was curbing, that stopped at the curbing, that would be part of the sidewalk beyond that, am I correct, Matt?
Thank you. That helps.
I think the important thing to remember is that a normal vehicle's eight foot wide. So if they park on the roadway, that's automatically obstructing the road. And it's important, because what we're trying to do here is that you still need two 12-foot lanes for two vehicles to travel safely, and we need to remove that hazard. And in all these situations, we're creating a hazard where we're creating it down to one lane, and you can't get by. So I think if, the way that Jeremiah's got it, it allows anytime that somebody's parked on the road, it's now violating that, that ordinance. Is that fair, no?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Watson?
So I'm not seeing the 20 feet in any of the language that I'm looking at, but...
10.02010, blocking traffic in A, the very first paragraph.
Oh, less than 20 feet. Okay, thank you. So Vice Mayor, in our neighborhood, there's constantly parking on the roadway. And if I'm understanding this correctly, every single one of them would be a violation. That's not enforceable. I mean, we have, you can drive through Woodland Hills right now, and I guarantee you, there's people parked along the roadway. And if you're going to start towing, or stickering, or whatever, every single car that's parked, because any car that's parked on the roadway, just by the nature of how much room they have to park, there's not going to be 20 feet left. And so I have a hard time saying that, and trust me, it creates some issues in our neighborhoods, especially when they have the estate sales and those kinds of things. And that's a whole different story. But day in and day out, people do not have enough, when, and this isn't me personally, I have lots of room, but for anybody that has just a normal driveway and have any visitors, those visitors park on the street. And if we're going to say every one of those is a violation, I have a, I have a real hard time with that. Because either we're going to enforce it or we're not. And if you are going to enforce that, you're going to have uproar in several neighborhoods, I'm sure, but specifically ours. So I, I'm real concerned about this, the way it's written.
Are those, Counselor Watson, are those public or private streets?
They're, they're public.
And so, I mean, yeah, it goes across the board. If, the problem is, if someone's parked in the street, and there's emergency, if the police need to get there, or Chief Morgan's people need to get there, they can't get there, because there's somebody parked in the street. So then it's a bigger issue than just someone parked in the street, but they don't own that property anyway. That's a public right-of-way.
And I understand that. And trust me, when there's parking on the street, two cars can't pass each other in my neighborhood. But I'm just telling you right now, if we, if we're going to go put up signs that say, "No parking on the street" in this neighborhood, because if you do, it's a violation, you're going to create some real problems.
Yeah, so this only allows for temporary loading and unloading, to be parked in the street, otherwise it would be considered blocking.
You know, any of the neighbors who have, even a small get-together at their house, there is no way those people can all park in the driveway. So that's a violation.
Is there a way we could...
So we're no longer going to have any gatherings at anybody's house. I'm just telling you that, I understand the need, and I understand the concern, but you're creating a situation that I think is unattainable. And that's what I don't want to do with any code.
Sure. Coming up, Matt, thank you.
I think that maybe we look at it the same way we do the snow plowing, and we give it an hour limit, because I think that it's important to still control this, because it's getting out of hand all over town, and people are parking in the roads all the time. And we got to have some authority. However, I don't disagree with you, Paul, that if you go to your mother's house, or your grandmother's house, you should be able to park out on the road and go visit. But I think if we could come up with some sort of time limit, like we do with the snow plowing, to give them a two-hour, a three-hour gap, or four-hour gap, then that gives the ability to still have those gatherings and not create a huge, if you guys agree. I mean, we haven't got to have a whole lot of talk about this, but we've all read it, and kind of, we're trying to head it down that path. Fair enough.
Excuse me, Counselor Buse, wanted to say something.
I like what you're trying to do here, but I do have, and maybe, Matt, maybe, how wide, for example, how wide is that Woodland Hills lane, which I drive down to get to my house? I don't live in Woodland Hills, but that's...
They're 12-foot lanes, they're 24-foot wide, and they're two-foot ribbon curbs, so you've got 28 feet.
So you've got 28 feet. So your average car, you could park one there, basically, on one side of the road and be...
It's about 20 feet, so it won't be blocking.
Yeah.
So a normal car, a small, compact car, our parking stalls are nine foot wide. So you typically have a couple of feet on both sides of those. Those are typical-sized parking stalls. So probably a regular, compact car's probably only seven, six feet, somewhere around there.
Yeah, some would be six, yeah.
So it, I think it comes down to the measurements here. And I don't think that they're trying to force everybody out, but I think the problem is, is that we got to come up with something that we can enforce for the situations where we're blocking PD and fire department. And it has become an issue for all of us, public works, PD, fire department, and it's all over town. Department, and it's all over town.
Yeah, and, and I would say, in most of our roads, in Woodland Hills, for example, and, and most of the roads in most of the neighborhoods, you can park one car on one side only, but there's not room to do two. And, and as Councilman Watson said, you still can't pass two cars, but people generally are pretty good about waiting for one to pass before the other one goes by. So I think if we can come up with something like that, where it's okay, again, one car on one side, but there are times when we do, you, you get two cars, and I mean, it is impassable. You, you can squeeze through, but certainly a fire truck couldn't get through there.
I remember, this is what Sholo has?
Yeah, so then we copy Sholo's, because we're neighbors.
Is, is it an issue that people, you know, have a perfectly good driveway and garage, but they just choose to park in the street, because it's a little easier for them, even though it's a little harder for everybody else, or is that just, I mean, to me, partially this could be enforcement, if you just selectively, you know, you enforce it against somebody like that, but if the driveway's full, and somebody parks on the street, you know, they have no choice. Can you do something like that?
The, the problem is, you don't, while people are parking in the street, they don't have the legal authority to park in the street, and the, the street is not designed for on-street parking in, in that subdivision. There are some areas, not in our community, that have on-street parking, but the roads were not designed for on-street parking.
Jeremiah, you need to come up to the mic, please.
The roads were not designed for on-street parking, and so, and just because people are parking in the street, that's, that's not what the roads were designed for. As an engineer, I can tell you that. They're not designed for parking, they're dr-, they're designed for free flow of traffic. So when people are parking in the street, it obstructs other traffic, as you guys indicated. It becomes a problem to public safety, and, and that's the perspective that this is coming from.
I'm, I'm just trying to get a feel for the problem, because I can, I can see that if somebody's having a garage sale, people are gonna be on the street, because there's no place for them to go.
True.
But if somebody's parking on the street, just because they don't give a damn, and they don't wanna drive all the way around into their driveway, I've got a little less sympathy for those guys. They're parking in the street, and they've got a driveway, parking your dog on driveway.
And if I may, Councilman, usually when I encounter situations like that, such as the estate sales, I'll have the streets all blocked up, usually I stop, talk to whoever the host is of the situation, and tell them, hey, I've got traffic blocking real bad, can you try to remind your folks, move them over, something like that. I usually try to, you know, leave bees with honey, so to speak, talk to them before I do that, but we do have a lot of people that park on the streets and they just don't really care to move anywhere else, and these are the ones where, as you, most of you know, my background is in medical, time is tissue, you know, things like that. If I need to get PD officers back there because there's an issue, I've even had snowplows stuck, we've gotta go door to door, find this person who drives this vehicle, try to get it out of the way, get a tow truck out there, 30-minute turnaround, we're, we're just stuck. So I would like to have a little more teeth to build to stop those kind of situations, and help our citizens have free movement and travel, where if there's an emergency, even they need to drive to the ER, they can get out of their house and do so safely.
I'm just wondering if there's a way to, you know, solve the problems we have without creating another problem, and I, I don't see a good way to do that other than selective enforcement.
So I would like to make a couple suggestions. I don't live in Woodland Hills, as you guys all do. I have people that are leaving their perfectly good driveways, completely open, and still parking on the street. We don't have the wide roads. I don't think my road is as wide as yours are. I could be mistaken, I'm not very good judge of that, Matt could tell me.
Yeah, a lot of our roads in town, Madam Mayor, is roughly 20, some of them stretch to 22, some of the nicer subdivisions are, are up in the 24 range, so it, it kind of varies there, and it makes it very difficult when you get a subdivision like your, yours, what you're talking about, and you get one car to park there, then there isn't enough room at all for people to get around.
So I would like to say it's a nice subdivision, it's just an older subdivision.
And I, I look at it as a road...
It's more established.
So I apologize.
And I do see it as a problem, I also see the dumpsters that are left out on the road as a problem, because those also impede traffic. I would like to propose maybe a number of hours, and that might make it harder for you, Chelsea, or for any of our officers, but when it becomes a problem is when it's continuous, a lot of times. So in, in your example, for somebody who's having a gathering at their home and you run out of space, I would like to suggest maybe a four or six-hour timeframe, that you could park on one side of the road as far off as you could, and then if it becomes a problem and the neighbors complain, I, I think there could be a little discretion in something like that, because you're right, it's not enforceable, community-wise, 24 hours a day, because there are gonna be situations where we all have to, a need for extra parking. So I don't know if that's something that we could add into it, if that would take away too much of what you're asking, because I do see what you're asking, Chelsea.
Yeah, we could, we could add a timeframe contingency for 10.02010 on your guys' motion, if that's what you need to do.
So is that something that you think might solve some of that?
Well, yeah, absolutely. Also, understanding now that our roads are a little wider than I thought they were, there are, like I say, there's constant parking, but it sounds like in our case, if they're parked on one side, there's still 20-foot available, maybe?
I, I would say so, and, and most of the cars that I've seen in your subdivision, they tend to get off the road just slightly.
They try and get as far as they can on that ribbon curb.
Yeah, and, and you have some shoulders, it's really the other areas where we don't have any shoulders, we don't have any, you know, we have deep drainages right on the edge, and, yeah. So I guess that, I'm kind of, I'm kind of second guessing myself on the time limit. I wish there was a better way that we could leave that up to the discretion of the officers, but I don't know how we do that, because in some of these other areas, it's not applicable to your situation, and so how do we, how do we balance that, you know? And I kind of tend to agree with this, and in your situation, it doesn't really matter because you have the space. However, in some of the other situations across town, it is a, a serious issue, when you get these 20-foot roads with a three-to-one ditch right off the edge of the road, and there's nowhere for them to scoot over, or people to pass them, and naturally becomes the issue, is the fire trucks can't even get by, or the police officers, or us as snowplows can't get by, because there's, the ditch is too steep to even put us there.
I guess the, the, you know, we, we need to look at this from both sides. So I absolutely 100% agree, we need to have access for emergency vehicles, I, I am not questioning that at all. But from the citizen's standpoint, if somebody's gonna have a gathering at their house, and they're even just gonna have three couples over, most of them are not gonna have parking for, for three cars, their driveways just don't accommodate that. So I would hate to see us, and, and maybe discretion is, is part of this, right, but I would hate to see us tell people they can't have a gathering at their house because they don't have parking, or they gotta shuttle those people from some public parking space. I mean, I just, from a citizen's standpoint, we just need to be mindful that, we encourage people to have gatherings at their house, so let's, don't discourage that.
So what would be a...
And VRBOs is a whole nother story.
What would be a reasonable number of hours, then?
In some of the areas in town, too, some of the, you know, some of the older neighborhoods, the setbacks, and where the, where the fence line starts off the roadway, I mean, not even enough room to park a motorcycle, barely, yet, yet a car, so, um, some of those areas are troublesome no matter what, so, you know, it's...
So how do we, Chief, how do we, how do we word that, so that we can, so that we can leave that to the discretion of the officers on working with the homeowners on moving? And we're trying to set this number of, it's gotta be 20 feet, well, that number's not really working for our situation like it does for Sholo, so how do we, that's a question I guess we need to figure out.
Sounds like the, the timeframe was more helpful than worrying about the 20, it's not like the 20 feet is workable, because even for him, it's workable for you, if, I mean, if one guy parks on one side, no problem, but if somebody parks right across the road, guess what? There's a problem, and, and it needs to be fixed. So it seems like there's just some wording in here in section 10.02.010, which is blocking traffic, which says, it is unlawful for any person to stop, stand, or park, and maybe, say, for greater than four hours.
Yeah.
Any motor vehicle or other vehicle, so, I mean, that, at least that gives you some ability to enforce it, and then if that doesn't do the job, we could come back and readdress it.
Is four hours a good number?
I, I like, you said four to six hours, I would say six hours, and I would leave the 20 feet in there.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I guess I'm thinking six hours if, in the case of...
Yeah, I would have no problem.
That's almost somebody, that's also almost somebody spending the night, they go into work, and, you know, that type of a thing, which, which a lot of them now is what you have. People have too many cars to fit in their driveway, and they park on the street, one, one car, so...
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, I, I like your six hours, and I think the, the problems we have with people parking in the street just because it's more convenient to block the street than it is to walk up their driveway, I, I don't have a lot of sympathy for those guys. They've gotta just get their car out of the street, so I like your six hours.
Well, you can't play basketball in the driveway if you got a car there.
Move it out for a couple hours and play basketball.
And if you can't wrap that game up in six hours.
Madam Mayor?
Sell tickets.
If I could, just one point, maybe it's a clarification, just, one of the things that they're trying to make a point of is, whose right of way is it? It's the town's, it's for traffic moving through. I think we've all grown up thinking, well, that parking spot out in front of my house is mine, you know, and it's not. And so it, it's to help to move, keep the traffic flow, so it then becomes an education thing. That's just my point. So here's, if, if the direction is to add six hours, then in the second sentence of A, second line, you could put, upon a street for no more than six hours, I think I've got that right, in such a manner as to leave available less than 20 feet, so. I don't know, I hope, Kevin told me that, so I'm, hopefully I got it in the right spot.
Okay, before we, before we do that, this is, this is a public hearing, and so is there any member of the public that would like to speak to this issue? Okay, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Vice Mayor?
No, I, I just had one. Does the six-hour allowance really hurt, though, if it's a really narrow street?
It wouldn't be allowed if you couldn't have more than 20 feet, though. The 20 feet would overrule the six hours.
Okay, I, yeah, I got you, you're right.
If you can't leave 20 feet...
On the narrow streets, yeah, the 20-foot would take care of it.
There would be no parking.
Okay, yeah.
Basically, is that my understanding?
Yeah, yeah, that answers it, yeah.
Do we have the authority to remove one if it's blocking the road? I thought that me and you had authority to do that if there was a situation where there was blocking...
I think we do.
So on top of that, me and Chief have the authority to...
If it's a problem.
Remove a car, if it's an actual problem, we can actually tow, but we have to be really justified on that, and that's what makes this so difficult.
Counselor Buesch?
I would just say, that's why I, I would think the discretion would come in, is where you've got less than 20 feet, on a road maybe that's only 22 to 24 feet wide, so any car there is gonna put you at less than 20 feet, but if, if it's still passable, I think that's where the discretion would come in. Am I wrong in thinking that, I mean?
I think that would be hard to, me either enforce it or you don't, I don't know, you guys address that.
I, I guess, and let me ask, for example, in the mayor's neighborhood, what, do you know what the width of those streets are, Matt?
Yeah, they're, they're 20, they're only 20 feet, and there's a lot of roads in town that are only 20.
20 feet from curb to curb?
From asphalt to asphalt, and then specifically in those type of neighborhoods, we have steep ditches on top of it, so there's no room for them to get off the side of the road, so you're probably left with maybe 13 or 14 feet if somebody parks on the road, and that's what struggles. And then for me and Chief, we have to really prove that they're an obstruction to tow their vehicle, and that would be in a worst-case scenario, and, and we have done that in the past, however, it's just, it's something that we take, we don't take lightly.
I, I would just say the same comment that Paul made earlier, I think that's gonna be tough to enforce, because we have a lot of those streets narrower, and a lot of those streets people do park, and, and I would say in most cases, if they just park on one side of the road, you're still able to get a vehicle, even, maybe I'm wrong, but even a fire truck through there, I mean, uh...
Right, so it, I, I think it gives them a hard and fast rule, and so they don't have to rely on, on an interpretation so much as if you have the 20 feet, you go out there, but they may just say, okay, you're violating this, boom, you're written up, and then it's enforceable in the court, as opposed to, well, this doesn't seem, this doesn't feel right, or whatever, but now we have something hard and fast in there that actually gives them the authority and a little more teeth, so they can get things done when things need to be done.
I, I agree with that, but I still see an issue with, if, if we're gonna enforce all that in these narrower streets, I, that's gonna be a problem, I think.
Right, then in that case, if somebody is in a narrower street, and they parked, and there's not, there's less than 20 feet, it's a clear infraction.
So I know of people who live up behind the Pasta House, for example, where that's an older subdivision, the roads are narrow, people park on the street, and the garbage truck can't get down there to pick up people's garbage. That's not, that's not fair to the other neighbors, when people...
Or somebody has a heart attack, and EMS is trying to get out, and they're dead.
Exactly, garbage is minor then, and, and if Chief Morgan is trying to get down there with a fire truck, or one of the bigger ambulances, it makes it really difficult. Chief?
We just had, in that same neighborhood, we just had that instance in the last snowstorm, you know, it, it applied to plowing, but we had a guy that parked right there, and we had to, we spent 15, 20 minutes trying to locate the, the owner of the vehicle while the snowplow couldn't even get through to plow the, the neighborhoods, and stuff like that, that, you know, we're trying to have a little more teeth with, so...
What if we, what if we just changed the amount of feet? Would that make everybody happy? I mean, what if we just changed it to 15 feet? That gives us on our roads that are, are 20-foot wide, if they're off the road by one or two feet, that gives us room to get by. However, in a situation where I need to get a semi by, or the Fire Department needs to get a full-size Fire Department by, we have the authority to say, hey, we gotta have room to get by, that, we have to have at least one lane.
What are, what are the, the A dot lane through town, those are 14-foot lanes?
Your outside foot, outside lanes are 14-foot, your inside lanes are 12.
So, so we've, I would say 14 feet would be an acceptable minimum.
It, it gives you enough room to get by, it's not, it gives us a lot more teeth than if, if we're on these roads that we're having these issues, however, it still doesn't fix your problem of these people actually parking on the road, and that's what we were trying to resolve.
Yeah.
But in, in the emergency situation, that gives it, that allows us to have, me and Chief to have a whole lot more teeth on saying, we're, we're gonna tow your car.
I would like to go back to what Keith's comment was, though, it is a public right of way. It belongs to the public, so are, I mean, who are we really trying to accommodate here? The general public, or this homeowner who, for whatever reason, won't park in their own driveway or in their own yard? Kind of a sticky one right there.
Can I still have a public comment?
Come on up, James, you need to come up to the microphone and speak into the microphone, please.
Can I still comment, I don't know if it was closed or not.
That's okay, I reopen it.
Perfect. Question is, um, I guess, police officer, I'm parked, I'm parked, if we still have the six hours, four hours, 20 minutes, whatever rule is, if I'm parked there, are you gonna come back in six hours later, and if you cite me, I can say, well, hey, I moved the 20 feet, I'm new, my time to restart, like, by putting a timeline on here, is it just kinda like defeating the purpose? Kind of, question to you.
I'll answer a question.
So I, I think like, a timeline is, is just a, an excuse for somebody to argue with the police, they go to court, they can say, where's the picture, or me showing that I was right here, I went back, I came back, I don't know, I think you're just opening it up for going back just more analytical things, of looking at things and arguments, and the problem not even solved, we just added a couple more sentences in it. That's my comment.
Thank you, I think that is a good point, but I think also it would allow for gatherings, such as Counselor Watson said, when you have too many folks coming over for Christmas dinner or something, and you don't want to, you know, discourage that kind of activity. I'm sorry, you guys wanted to say something.
That's okay, and if I wanted to clarify, I know that question's been brought up a lot about enforceability, if this is gonna be too grand, but right now, change takes time, the stigma is, you can just park wherever you want in the town. If we start slowly enforcing, it will change that image where, hey, we just know you don't park there anymore, and then it stops becoming a huge enforceability issue, and becomes a small case-by-case situation at that point, if that helps with that scope.
And it goes back to what Keith said about education, too, so, exactly. Thank you, Chelsea. Counselor Buesch?
I think if we change the, the 20 feet and put it down, I think maybe we can do away with the hour limit, I don't know. There are still gonna be some areas, like behind the Pasta House, I, you can't park on the road there, I mean... I mean, it's, it's not going to work. But, but most, I, I, and I don't know, I'll ask you, and, and Matt maybe knowing the streets, I mean, in most places, I think you still could park a car if you can get it all off the road and still leave a lane to go by.
Yeah, my, my snowplow blades, which are probably the biggest thing on the road, and they're 12-foot wide, so I would say I'd need at least 14 or 15 feet would be suitable, even maybe even 16 feet. But in those areas where you're talking, those are our biggest problem areas. And we just can't control it, it's just out of hand, and we get stuck. So we'll, we'll get stuck like we did on this last storm for an hour and a half while the other rest of the town is waiting on our snowplows, because we can't get by one citizen that doesn't want to park in his driveway because he doesn't want to burn.
And, and I would say too, along, it sounds like it's already in the code, but from October through April or whatever it is, there is no on-street parking, basically, in...
Overnight hours.
Yeah.
Overnight hours, and it's got a two-hour time limit, and that's really hard for our officers. So we call them, we honk when we go by, so this is how it goes down. We got a car that's in the road, we honk with our air horn as we go by and make everybody in the neighborhood mad because we wake everybody up. But we want to make sure everybody knows that that guy was parking out there. Then we call the officers, the officers arrive, let them, they hunt down whoever's it is, because a lot of times it's not parked right in front of the house that they're at. And then that takes time, so then they have to come back after they find the owner, two hours later. We're six hours into a shift by the time that this car is out of our way.
Counselor Watson?
So I, I agree with Counselor Buse that if we, if we reduce the width from 20 to 16 even, the other, and, and don't worry about the hours and timeframe. But the other comment that I would have is that, as a public courtesy, and maybe this is going to cost some money, but in those areas where our roads really are just too narrow for anybody, why don't we put up some signs saying, no on-street parking, per ordinance, blah, blah, blah?
Yeah.
And help give education to those people that they can't park there. And then, if they continue to park, we've given them fair warning with signage, so.
Matt?
You like to make work for me.
Do signs cost?
Yeah, signs are expensive, I am not a sign person. I, I try to put very little signs in, just because of the cost and how much time they take to maintain. However, I don't think that we're going to run out there and start... I think that, I think the officers are going to be more like...
Education.
Warning, education, I think that that's going to come. We, we just, with the situations we have, without diving deep into them, there, there are people that are not working with us. The people that we don't have problems with move their car, right? These aren't, we're not dealing with those type of people, so.
Okay, Chief?
And you brought up a great point on the timeframes, maybe we can, you know, if, if we go with a six-hour timeframe, we can, you know, house that into a 24-hour period or something. So, you know, people aren't just, you know, moving it and coming right back around and starting a new six-hour period, so, something to think about there.
Okay. But if we reduce it to 15 feet, you said we probably don't need to worry about number of feet?
Yeah, it, it sounds to me like we've circled down to a workable solution. And then if we go through a period of education, I'd say by the second winter, if there's a car in the way, have it towed and send him the bill.
But this isn't just winter time, this is every, all the time.
Yeah, but I'm saying, it's, at some point, regardless, there's some educational process, I agree with what Paul said, after that educational process, it's just your car was towed because you parked in the street.
Chief Morgan, is 15 feet enough for your fire trucks? Yes, thank you. Not ideal, probably, but...
Realize you're talking about parking, and if we, what if every situation will be here all night? If you're in a cul-de-sac or a hammerhead, and you have a big ladder truck or a fire engine, it's the swing of the back. We'll solve the problem, it's taking out their car.
Okay. Thank you, maybe if we let people know that, they'll quit parking there. Thank you.
If I can use that beer and we're good to go. I've got some big plows.
Out with the snowplows, right, there you go.
Yeah, I, I think I, I don't like the, I'm, I'm not for, I don't think that I like the hourly thing. I think that really causes us more problems, in my personal opinion.
Do you guys, tell us what you need?
If we can, if you guys decide on 15 feet, I think that kind of solves everything for us and that timeframe can go out, so.
Council members, any further comments, questions, a motion?
You want me to make a motion?
Absolutely, Counselor Watson?
I move to approve Ordinance Number 22446 and Resolution Number 221608, amending Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, by adding Chapter 10.02, General Parking Regulations, and by changing, um, Section 10.02.010 and changing from 20 feet to 15 feet.
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, that carries the notice, thank you for bringing this to us. I, I do know it's a problem, we really appreciate the input from all the PD as well as everybody else. Matt, too, Jeremiah. Okay, Item D5, Consider Applicants to Fill the Town Council Vacancy. Applicant Timothy Kenslick has withdrawn his application to serve. So we now have three candidates, Tabor Heisler, Vincent Catolica, and Dennis Hughes. So what we're going to do tonight is we're going to start with Tabor. And I'd ask the other two applicants if you'd go wait out in the visitor's center and we will have somebody come and get you. Okay, Annie will, will take care of that for you. So after they get situated, we'll, we'll invite Tabor to come up. We have some questions we're going to ask you, but I would first like to give you the opportunity to kind of introduce yourself, and we'll go on to our questions, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Tabor Heisler, a member of the community now for about 12 years, a small business owner here that my wife and I started in the last year. I'm also the Division Chief of Training for Timber Mesa Fire and Medical District. I appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you, Tabor. I'm going to start with Counselor Kriegbaum, if she'd ask the first question, please.
Hello. Would you please tell us about your motivation and reasons for seeking this appointment? Thank you.
Uh, I, my, my motivations for seeking this appointment are simple. Civic duty and an opportunity to serve my community and to build some relationships. And, I mean, in the interest of time, that was the, that's the simplest way to say why, why I want to be here and, and, and just serve the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Buse?
Tabor, this appointment will fill the vacant seat until November 2022. Are you able to fulfill that commitment?
Absolutely, I wouldn't be standing in front of it.
Vice Mayor?
Are you able to make the time commitment to attend council work sessions that are held during the day and to serve as a liaison to local nonprofits and organizations by attending their meetings in, in extra hours, things like that?
Uh, I do believe I am, I'm sure you guys know, I was recently promoted and that put me back to a 40-hour position within the district. A lot more flexibility, I think, than when I was on a responding apparatus. So I do believe that it frees me up to be able to attend meetings throughout the day, during the week, weekends, and, and of course nights for the council meetings themselves.
Thank you, Counselor Watson?
All right, tell us what you would bring to the table to help make us a better town council and what you would hope to accomplish if you were appointed.
I don't necessarily feel like I have an agenda for things to accomplish. I, I would like to see more activities in the town. I would like to see economic growth and development, which I think is a regional effort. I think there's affordable housing that's becoming a pretty big problem. In my current position as a recruiting officer for Timber Mesa, we're able to find people, but once those people are hired, they're not able to find anywhere to live that they can afford. So items like that, and I think, as, as you guys have discussed here tonight, tourism is important. I know that we've done Christmas on Evergreen Drive, I think this is our biggest year ever. I think we were seeing somewhere between 50 and 100 vehicles a night, probably contributing to a little bit of the congestion we were just talking about. Those are the things that I think that I could bring to the table. Along with that, I am a, a, somebody that's in the PSPRS system, so as we discuss items like that, I, I'm familiar with that system, a strong advocate for public safety for obvious reasons. I have a bachelor's degree in public safety and emergency services management, and I have a master's degree in homeland security with an emphasis in leadership. So those are all things that I think I can bring to the table and, and assist the group.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Snitzer?
What do you think is the single greatest challenge facing our community today?
If, if I had to pick one thing that I think that I've heard about most recently today, it is the affordable housing piece. It's, you know, we've heard several discussions, even tonight, about businesses that can't find people to work. I know that as a business owner, I have struggled to find employees and, and, and I'm not paying minimum wage, right? So it, I, I think the biggest piece for us is that we've got to have places in the community where people can go in order for our businesses to have people that they can employ to, to serve the community. I think that, that for sure has got to be the biggest issue before the region today.
Okay, thank you. The, we have always faced the issue of balancing the need for growth with keeping the small-town atmosphere. Do you have any thoughts or ideas on how we accomplish that going forward?
I, I think that, I, I have to tell you guys, when I moved here, I, I, I fell in love with this place. And, and as you guys know, my wife is a longstanding family from the community. And I, I think there is a, there's a, there's a balance that needs to be found. I, I'm not sure that I have that answer by myself. I, I do think that we, we have to be at a point where we don't ignore growth. Growth is going, it's going to happen, and I think that we have to manage that growth. That's what I think that we need to do, right? I, I don't necessarily think we need to seek it out, but it, but it has to be managed, we have to have a plan for it to come in. And I, I, I think of cities in my head that, that kind of ignored growth and, and thought that it would never come, and it, and it came, and as a result, the, the planning for the town or, or city was, was behind the curve, if you will. And so I, I believe that the best option for us to move forward with that balance is to just make sure we have a good metric in place for how we manage the growth. And, and because it's going to happen.
Thank you. Any other final questions or comments? Okay, thank you for your time, Tabor. If you want to go ahead and have a seat, and Annie, would you please bring in Vince? Welcome, if you'd just like to introduce yourself and tell us just briefly about yourself?
Certainly, my name is Vince Catolica, I'm 77 years old, I've lived up here, part-time and full-time since 1995. And I actually, when I retired about 12 years ago, I moved up full-time. And of course, I've obviously watched the town grow and, and conduct business and what have you. And I would like to see it continue, I'd like to see a little bit of additional growth controlled. I don't want to see some big factories coming in, which I don't think are, logistically would be very smart anyway, but I saw the opening and I think I could offer some help to the council, so I thought I'd throw my hat in the ring.
Thank you. Counselor Buse, would you start off the questions, please?
Yes, Vince, tell us about your motivation and reasons for seeking this appointment.
Well, as I mentioned just a second ago, I've lived up here now for quite a few years, full-time. And I, of course, noticed things getting a little bit more dense, a lot more population coming up, and I'd like to see the growth, I mean, the community needs the growth. I would, I've also heard things about larger businesses. I'm all for business, by the way, I've got an MBA. I, I'd like to see some reasonably strong judgment used when businesses, really large businesses come in, which would require additional traffic, as, as you all know, during the summertime, traffic is kind of a problem around here. But I also have an MBA and I've served in the military, I've done all of that, and I just think possibly I could throw a little bit of new blood into any decision-making that are, that are here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes. Vince, this appointment will fill a vacant seat until November of 2022, which is not that far. So are you able to fulfill that commitment?
I believe so, I have no other commitments that would interfere with it.
I'm moving away.
Pardon me?
You're not moving away.
That I'm going to move away is in a box. I'll stay here in that, too.
Counselor Watson?
We're not wishing that on you.
No.
Neither am I, as a matter of fact. Are you able to make the time commitment to attend council work sessions that are held during the day and serve as a liaison to various nonprofit organizations and other such meetings?
I believe I can.
Counselor Snitzer?
Vince, tell us what you would bring to the table to help make us a better town council and what you would hope to accomplish if you were appointed.
Well, for the latter part, what I'd hope to accomplish is to add new blood into the decision-making, and I mentioned what I think I would like to see as goals for the, and growth. I do believe in growth, but, but once again, I don't want us to be a big city like some of our neighbors. I mentioned a minute ago, I do have an MBA, I've been in the military for 24 years as well. I flew fighters, I did the tour over in Vietnam, and was an instructor pilot down at the Tucson Air National Guard. So I, you know, I'm definitely an Arizona. And I think my, I'd be a little prejudiced when I said this, I think my judgment's such that I might be able to add some new light from a different perspective, possibly, I don't know. Because I haven't heard any of you talk, so, but I'd certainly be able to discuss anything with an open mind and, and, and possibly help make good decisions.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kriegbaum?
Hello, Vincent. What do you think is the greatest, single challenge that's facing our community today?
The last part in the...
The single greatest challenge facing our community today.
Well, not knowing all of the challenges that are out there, it might be difficult to answer that. But I think, in line of what I was saying a minute ago, excessive and/or rapid growth that could put too much stress on the city is financially and, and certainly on the, well, I think traffic problems in the, in the summertime, the wintertime, as you all know, is very nice. But there are situations, I think, or timeframes that I'd like to see that controlled. So I, I just, I'm all for growth, don't misunderstand me, but I like to see it, the right kind of growth. And, and I'm going to say that's the most, but I don't know all the other, other things that are facing the city right now, so it's hard to judge on those.
Thank you.
So you've, you've brought up the issue of growth, and that's one of the constant challenges we face with the need for growth, with balancing that with our small-town atmosphere. Do you have any specific ideas on how to address that or opinions on that? You've mentioned it quite a bit, but anything?
Yeah, no, that's a good question, and I'm going to, I'm going to turn it around. I don't know what's on the, I don't know, maybe everybody would agree with things I would say, I don't know. I don't know if I have anything specific to add, because I don't know what's already been there. If that answers the question, kind of dodges it in a way, too, and I don't mean to do that.
Okay, well, thank you, we appreciate you coming tonight. Those are the questions we had, does anybody have a final question, anything for Vince? No, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then we will invite Dennis Hughes to come in, and we'll ask him the same questions. Hello, welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, before you ask any questions, may I make a brief statement?
Absolutely.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, I don't want to be... Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, I don't want to be removed from consideration, but I want to highly recommend and throw my support behind Tabor Heisler. And I've seen him in action through the fire district, and he's a tremendous motivated fellow, and I surely do support him.
Thank you for that, but you would like to continue through the process?
Sure.
Okay, then I'll start by asking you, tell us about your motivation and reason for seeking this appointment.
Well, I've been here before, thoroughly enjoyed it, and I, even though I'm getting to be an old fart, I still like responsibility and accountability, and I like to serve people, particularly the citizens of our community.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes. This appointment will fill the vacant seat until November of this year.
Correct.
Are you able to fulfill that commitment?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Watson?
Dennis?
Yes.
How are you?
I almost wore my blue hat just for you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you as well.
As you without it. As you without it.
I could go home real quick.
All right. Are you able to make the time commitment to attend council work sessions that are held during the day and serve as a liaison to local nonprofits or other organizations by attending their meetings?
Yes, I can.
You already do it a lot.
I do. I try.
Counselor Snitzer?
Okay, enough of the easy questions.
Okay.
Dennis, tell us what you would bring to the table to help make us a better town council and what you would hope to accomplish if you're appointed.
Well, I think what I bring to the table is having been a citizen for 46 years now, previous experience on the council and various other organizations. And what I would hope to accomplish is reach thoughtful, beneficial decisions that the council has to make. There are a lot of tough ones, just like tonight, spending an hour talking about parking. I mean, it's not easy. There are a lot of unintended results.
Yes.
So you have to be careful and very cautious when you decide things for the community.
Thank you.
Counselor Craigbaum?
Hi, Dennis.
Hi.
What do you think is the single greatest challenge facing our community today?
Fire. Number two would be traffic, I suppose, in the summertime. But, and the biggest challenge really is the revenue stream. We live and die on tourism and small business. You know, everybody wants a big-box store, but frankly, statistically, small business accounts for 80% of the jobs in the world. So we need to support our small business.
Thank you.
You, Counselor Buse?
The town, oh, I'm sorry. The town has challenges balancing the need for growth with the desire to maintain our small-town atmosphere. Do you have any ideas or opinions on how to accomplish that?
How to accomplish the small-town atmosphere? Well, as I put on my application, I would love to see a pedestrian-friendly downtown. There are so many obstacles in the way of that. Number one, it's a state highway, and I know, I don't know how far we would get with that idea. But it's a great place to be. People just want to be here to be here. But I think if we had a pedestrian-friendly area where folks could park and walk around and visit small business, that would be a big help for the community.
And we've been talking about that for how many years?
Long as you and I have.
That's for sure.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other final questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. And before we move on here, I would just like to thank all three of you for your willingness to sit up here with us. I know it might be a little out of your comfort zone or your usual thing, but we do appreciate having qualified applicants for this position. So moving on then, pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A1, the council may vote to enter into executive session. Upon a public majority vote, the members constituting a quorum, a public body may hold an executive session for the following purposes: Discussion or consideration of employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, demotion, dismissal, salaries, disciplining or resignation of a public officer, appointee, or employee of any public body. Except that with the exception of salary discussions, an officer, appointee, or employee may demand that the discussion or consideration occur at a public hearing. Public bodies shall provide the officer, appointee, or employee with written notice of the executive session as is appropriate, but not less than 24 hours for the officer, appointee, or employee to determine whether the discussion or consideration should occur at a public meeting. So we can, we don't have to go into executive session, so what are the wishes of the council? Vice Mayor?
Well, yeah, I'm not sure if we need to move into executive session or not, do we?
That's what I, no, we don't have to. We may, we may go into executive session.
Does anybody, yeah, I might check and see if anybody wants to. I'll make a motion if they do.
No? Okay. Then I, we can move on then to item D5C, which is the appointment of an individual to fill a town council vacancy with a term to extend through November of 2022. Do I have a motion? Counselor Snitzer?
We appoint Dennis Hughes.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we appoint Dennis Hughes. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? Thank you. That motion fails. I would entertain another motion.
I'll make a motion.
Vice Mayor?
I would move that we appoint Tabor Heisler to the position of counselor.
I would second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Craigbaum, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Tabor Heisler to fill this vacancy. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. All opposed? That carries unanimously. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand first, Paul. Congratulations, Tabor. We have Judge Weedmeyer here tonight who will swear you in. If you would like to come up, and I'll turn it over to Judge Weedmeyer.
Does this work for sound?
Yep.
Can you hear that okay, back there? Yeah, you have to get real close to it. Thank you.
What's more important, your hand than me? Okay, if you would, please, raise your right hand. I, Tabor Heisler.
I, Tabor Heisler.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of the office of town council member.
The duties of the office of town council member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Weedmeyer. Counselor Heisler, please take your seat. And welcome. We look, I'll look forward to working with you. Moving on to item D6, which is town committee assignments. So now that we have a new council member, we need to look at what we are currently assigned to and possibly redistribute something. Counselor Hastings served with the senior center. So I, what I'd like to do real quickly, go down the list here, and if somebody would like to to move council assignments or stay the same, either way. So the first two are givens. So we'll move on to the senior center. We have Counselor Smith, Vice Mayor Smith.
Yeah, if he's interested, I've, I can either continue to do it or if he would, if, 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 Tabor, if it's of interest to you, then speak up. That's fine.
Maybe what I would like to backtrack a little bit before we, thank you for that, Vice Mayor. Is there a particular area of interest that you would like to look at? I don't know if you've had much of a chance to look at all of these. I know you probably have interest in various things. You have children at school.
I, wherever I'm needed.
Okay. Okay, we'll go through them all then. So senior center.
I'll keep that for now.
Keep that one, okay. Humane Society. I've been acting as the liaison for there. Are you interested at all in the Humane Society, or is there?
Absolutely.
Would you be willing to go to their meetings?
Yes.
Okay. Let's put Counselor Heisler down there, and I can, because I work with them a lot, I can be the backup. The Little Colorado RCND, Counselor Snitzer, are you good?
Yep.
Trax.
Yes, I'm.
Counselor Craigbaum, you're good with Trax, obviously? Okay. Natural Resources. Counselor Watson, you go to most of those anyway, is that right, or not so much?
You know, recently I have not, since I retired, but it's an area, obviously, that deals with forest restoration, fire. And so, Tabor, if that's an area you have interest in, I'd be happy to let you take my spot.
Would you be interested in that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And Counselor Craigbaum, you'll stay on that one as well?
Yes, please.
Okay. Nature Center.
Yes.
Okay. Historical Society.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
You're okay with that, as well as the school board?
Yes.
NACOG, Transit Authority, you're still good with those? Vice Mayor?
Yes, yes, certainly am. I'm chair of that.
The Chamber of Commerce, I believe, maybe we should just drop that off. Okay, thank you. Forfry. Counselor Craigbaum, Counselor Heisler, are you interested in that one?
I still would like to be there.
Okay, that's fine. Counselor Watson, do you want to stay on that one? Do you attend those still, or no?
Again, I haven't recently, I'm happy to, but natural resources and forfry really go hand in hand in a lot of ways, so. I don't want to get the new guy on everything, but.
Would you?
Happy to do it.
Okay. All right, thank you. So. Forest Health, Counselor Craigbaum, are you still willing to stay there?
Yes, and I would certainly welcome.
As backup, maybe?
Join that. That would be my recommendation, if it's all right with him.
Absolutely.
Okay. Save Our Park, we'll leave as is. And then obviously, the Council Members Association, we are all members of that one. Would you like a vote on that, or we can just appoint those? Okay, thank you. Okay, and we can get new ones printed up there. All right, our final item tonight is reports from council committee liaisons and the town manager. Does anybody have anything that they really would like to bring up tonight or anything that we need to hear about? We haven't done this for a while. Vice Mayor?
I have just one thing, that we have an issue with one of our bus stops for the little transit system that we operate in our town. I shouldn't say it's little, it's a great transit system, and it's the one behind Charlie Clark's. And we've had some problems with people not behaving properly in the, in the bus shelter. And the feeling is that it's kind of hidden back in the trees. And if we were to move that to a little more open space, like over by the Love Kitchen, it would serve the Love Kitchen better. It would serve the patrons for Charlie Clark's better, and it would not cause a big disruption in the bus service, none at all. So we're looking at moving that bus stop.
Thank you. Counselor Snitzer?
Mayor, I do, I do have some things I would like to bring forward, but, but given the late hour, could we just postpone this until next meeting?
We certainly could. We typically do it the second meeting. Is there something real critical that you'd like us to know about?
No, but there's some just information I would like to get out.
All right, I think we can go ahead and accommodate that. Thank you. Anything else? Counselor Watson, you're good?
I'm good with that, but postponing it till the next meeting.
Okay. All right, I do have one brief announcement with the Humane Society. I'm sure you're all aware that Deana Pace, who's been the director for a number of years, has announced her retirement effective the end of the year. She's got some big shoes to fill. I just commend her for everything that she's done, and I know that they will find somebody to replace her. So we just need to keep them in our thoughts and hopes for a good person to fill that spot. Keith, do you have anything we need to?
No, we've sent out emails the last couple of days with updates on the nomination that the town has been for an award at Woodland Lake Park, and then we just sent out a budget schedule. So we'll begin on March the 9th, and for right now, that's, and we'll be bringing back the strategic plan that we worked on last month.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
One quick thing?
Yes.
Next meeting, we start at 5:30?
For pictures.
For pictures.
Yeah, the meeting will still start at 6 o'clock. We just need to be here, yeah. Okay, all right, thank you. I appreciate everybody's patience tonight. This meeting is adjourned.